First time in almost five years.
Oh my god, now I gotta go back and watch every meeting to be sure.
Alright, so I'm gonna call the Wednesday November 20th City Commission meeting to order. Call the roll please.
Commissioner Rachel Lylesmith here. Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Present.
Commissioner Dan Holliday. Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here. Commissioner Smith's in the building. Gilovich, you show up. If you'll please stand and show me the flag, so you... Let the record show that Commissioner Smith has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
I have one proclamation. This is the proclamation declaring November 24th, the day after Thanksgiving, as Oregon City Bi-Local Week... Oh, that's 24th through 30th, 2019's Oregon City Bi-Local Week, and Saturday, November 30th, as Oregon City Bi-Local Small Business Saturday. I'm not gonna read the proclamation. You can go online and see it. I have signed that. And then we have the 3B, 19654, the Natural Resources Committee Annual Update. Mr. Turway?
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to announce Trent Warnes, the Chair of our Natural Resources Committee.
And just in full disclosure, my daughter is also a member of the Natural Resources Committee.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Trent Warnes. I am a resident here in Oregon City, and I'm the Chairman of the Natural Resource Committee for Oregon City. I just wanted to present to you guys tonight kind of a rundown of what we've done for 2019. We've added a few new members, Mike Hamilton and Marie Holliday. Unfortunately, at the end of this year, we're gonna be losing members Jerry Herman and Matt Cool. So we're gonna have to do some recruitment and get some new people. Throughout the year, we kind of had a joint work session with the Planning Commission. We've been working on communication. We've worked on code amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. We've also been receiving feedback on different applications throughout the year. And then we're kinda look ahead. Just kinda going back through, on February 25th, we had a work session with the Planning Commission, discussed a number of different issues and policies, and kinda just trying to kinda revolve around what we could do to improve tree removal policy, public improvement standards to save trees, annexations, public notices, wetlands, and the Heritage Tree Program. Currently, we've been working together with the, for staff and the PRAC, with the public, to improve communication about issues that we're discussing during our meetings. Stuff that we've been working on with the Oregon City Municipal Code, we've dealt with 12.08 public and street trees. We've amended or helped amend 12.32 heritage trees and stands. 6.12 public improvement standards. 7.18, 7.4... Sorry. 17.48 Willamette River Greenway Overlay District, and 17.49 Natural Resource Overlay District. Those that we've gone through and kinda tried to help improve things and standardize language, and I think we've pushed some good things through. We've received feedback on the Phase Two of the Cove, the Kenema Dock, and construction along the Willamette River, Kenema Wetland Discussion, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, an upland habitat discussion, and a few others. Things that we're looking forward to for this next year are just, we're kind of keep pushing forward with the Heritage Tree Code stuff, and what we can do to make that a more viable program for Oregon City and get more people to kinda buy into it and see what they can do to protect trees that they can. That's all I've got. Any questions?
Questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Do we have any citizen comment?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Mr. Gifford, Mr. Edgar.
You gotta stop meeting like that.
Yeah, right. Same order. Good evening, Miss Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I wanted to make my monthly pitch for the Oregon City Business Alliance next week, next Tuesday. We are having the Vice President of Business Development for Greater Portland, Inc., who's gonna come and talk about how they attract business to the region. And I know that Greater Portland, Inc. is a partner of the city. And today is the last day to sign up, by the way. If you go to ocbusinessalliance.com, tickets can be purchased for that. It's a luncheon, 11:30 to 1:00 at the Abernathy Center next Tuesday.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Edgar.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I wanted you to see a map that I brought in that was prepared by the City of Oregon City. In it, if you wanna take some detail, you could take a look at all of the lines here that are, that have pink on them are city light of ways unimproved. You see how extensive it is? And these are areas that are mostly in the rough. But when I came, I brought this map to the city to a meeting with the city manager Monday. And when I brought it there to talk about that and talk about abuse, we have a single woman in Oregon City living in a house right on Third Avenue. And she's been intimidated and bullied and abused, and it's been done by city personnel too. And when I tried to talk about this, we tried to talk about it, the subject was changed. Didn't wanna talk about it. In fact, Tony looked at me and I felt hate. I'm sorry. That's how I felt.
Mr. Edgar, we're not gonna bring personalities into this.
Okay, I'll stop that, right there. But what I'm here about is in this document. We have had problems, and we have this, one neighbor has five cameras pointed at him. Could you imagine your personal privacy being invaded with five cameras? And this is just part of the problem. But when we endorse that, when we accept that type of abuse of a resident of Oregon City, that type of bullying is something that's absolutely unacceptable. I am a man, and I don't condone in any way the abuse of a woman. And that's what's been happening. And so I couldn't help myself, after I had this meeting, to not come back here and tell you how appalled I was at the reaction and what was said. And if I personally asked, I felt that there should be a forensic arms-length study, an investigation of what's happening. And if we don't do something like that, we can't ever get to the bottom of what really is being, what really is happening. And that's the reason why I came here. I think it's important, or I wouldn't have said it. I wouldn't have put my name on the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor. What? Go ahead.
We have two neighbors in a dispute over...
I'm fully aware of this.
So after that meeting with Ms. Webb, there are a number of number of issues. And so one of the places that Ms. Webb and I agreed to work on is that she has a property description of her property, right? Whether it's public right-of-way or not, it is a place to start with her, and she agreed to work on that. She also agreed to meet with myself and Chief Band to talk about some of her concerns. So, you know, I know a lot of folks are trying to step in. I mean, there are a lot of accusations going back multiple years. We can't address all of them at once. The Commission has taken steps to address the Almond Fence on Genong as part of the global look at Kenema. The Commission passed Historic Review Board Policies that address whether the fence posts or the fence posts can be touching or not. Like it or not, you have addressed that. You know, there's questions about Natural Resource Overlay District. There's a question about stuff being thrown in the creek. There are a lot of issues. So we're trying to start with a basic one of what do you own? Because I think a lot of these discussions about trespass, right-of-way, alley, not alley, have to start with that. So I just feel like I need to respond. This has been going on for a long, long time. A lot of accusations have been made.
Alright, Mr. Commissioner Smith, you got something?
I know a fair amount about it. But I guess my only concern is the element that involves city staff. And what, if anything, has come out that is of any merit? And what have we done about it? Have we looked into it?
Yeah, when I've talked with John, I mean, some of these accusations about people that he has, you know, these relationships with, and contractors, you know, he knows, he works with people.
Have you looked into it?
Looked into all of these accusations? No.
I mean, this has been going on for years. So at any point in the last few years that you've been city manager, have we actually looked into whether or not any of these allegations involving city staff have any merit at all?
In the conversations that I've had, preliminary conversations with John about them, and I didn't feel that there was anything to follow up on accusations of police following her. We have not...
That's enough.
So let me answer one other thing, and that is that Ms. Webb and I think Mr. Edgar made a complaint to the Engineering Board. They did come and do an investigation and found no wrongdoing.
That was within the last, like, couple of years ago?
Five years, sometime in the last five years.
Yeah, it was a while ago, but since then, have we done anything?
No.
There's not been anything since then?
No, but it's just been an ongoing, 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 you know, these two folks complaining about pretty much everybody else in Kenema. Chief Band?
I just wanted to say there's one other thing that I suggested. Mr. Edgar's reached out to me several times describing things, and kind of trying to figure out who's talking to who, and I suggested mediation. The county offers mediation. It's a very involved process. They take their work very seriously. It requires two parties who wanna come together and resolve an issue. I think that's still an option, but that is not, that's just an option for people to go try and resolve this. And we've also suggested that.
Okay, I don't wanna, I don't wanna continue down this path here. I'm gonna be happy to let staff take care of this. Ms. Hanum and Mr. Mahoney?
Hi. Liz Hanum, the Director from the Downtown Oregon City Association. I just wanted to share some good news and some potentially really exciting news. Yesterday, it was announced that Oregon City was a top 10 finalist for the Small Business Revolution TV show on Hulu. And so I've been working with the production team for a couple of months now, and I'm really excited that we got top 10. So look for a production team. They're gonna actually do some filming next month, in December. And then if we make it to the top five, which is a staff decision, then it'll go to a public vote, and we'll actually have an episode on the TV show. So if we make it to the top five, expect me to come back and get everyone to vote.
Explain, why don't you explain what the next piece of that is? So if we get to the top five, what do they bring to the table?
Yeah, so if we get to the top five, then the footage that they take over the next month will be used to help us get public votes. And so it'll go up on Hulu as an episode. And then if we make it to the top one, then there's actually $500,000 of investment, technical support. Six businesses each get $25,000 to physically improve their space. I'm actually working with Lori Bell to make sure that it's not just downtown businesses that are eligible for this. So we're really excited to spread it around the whole city, which is super exciting. But yeah, so, and then it'll be a 10-episode series on Hulu, with six episodes for each business, and then an episode for the community. And then there's $300,000 left that will go towards a public improvement project. So we'll work with the city to figure out what that looks like, so.
So I've actually been a fan of the show from the very beginning. I've watched all four seasons. One of the cool things about this show is it's not just the money, but they bring in the whole business development team from this corporation. Plus, they have a couple of guest stars. The first couple of seasons, Robert Hirkvik, who was a shark on Shark Tank, was in the first at least two or three seasons. And they come in and actually talk to these business owners about how they can improve, how they can change the inside of their interior to make more sales, how to do marketing, packaging, website, all that stuff. So it's not just, here's $25,000, but it's a real professional team that comes in and helps these businesses. So it's a pretty exciting deal. I would encourage you to go back and watch earlier seasons of the show.
Yeah, it's very exciting as a, not just a business development, but as tourism. And they do a big production around what the community provides, so it's pretty, I'm excited.
Simply because I became aware of this thanks to you on Facebook, of all places. So the question is, what are we doing as a community to get this word out to everybody? And what is our method of communication? Are we going through our, through Kristen? Is she putting it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we putting it out everywhere? And then do we know when they're coming? Because, I mean, let's get our prom dress on, you know?
Yeah.
I've already, I've already put on my suit.
You have a suit?
So we find out, there's a call with the production team tomorrow. So we'll find out when they're actually coming to visit on the call tomorrow. So I'll put out another big push, once we find out what date they're actually gonna come. And we'll do invites, personal invites to all of the Commission, and all of the major organizations like OCBA and Chamber and all that. We really want everybody to get excited and get involved, and...
And maybe some coaching for people that are in pursuit of these individual awards and community awards. What are they looking for? What can we do? How can we dress it up?
Yeah, I...
I know you're on it.
When we, when there was a chance that we could get top 10, I went back and watched all of the episodes again. And I've...
What's the winning combo?
Yeah, I'm looking, you know, they, we have to pick a couple of businesses for them to visit. And so we're starting to talk to businesses about what the opportunity is, so.
Alright.
The only unfortunate thing is that the DOWS is also in the competition, so.
I know, but two Oregon Cities is really exciting.
It's both the end of the trail.
Yeah.
The DOWS is not the end of the trail.
Alright, you haven't opened that up. Mr. Mahoney?
I got two things to talk about tonight. Do I get six minutes?
No. Nice try, though.
Well, I wanna talk to you about two words called due process. As a planner, due process because of the Vassala Decision and what have you in Senate Bill 100, establishing land use planning in Oregon, due process was everything. You gotta go through that due process to get a plan approved. You gotta consider all the facts, professional and political. And if we don't have due process, we end up out in a parking lot, and nothing gets done. Due process wasn't considered with Mr. Edgar's comments, and I'm offended by that. Your response should have been, "We'll take it under advisement and refer it to the Complaint Department." And that's what we have. And that's why I had to clean up my hat next to my house with the blackberry bushes that got too high. So I had to come back because of due process, because I got a letter in the mail from the Complaint Department saying that somebody had complained. And so I went ahead and spent a couple hundred dollars and got it. So when somebody comes down here and makes a complaint to you, say, "We'll take it under advisement and we'll refer it to the appropriate office," which is the Complaint Department. And if they can't adjudicate it, or whatever they do there, and I'm sure they're very fine people and very professional, and they do it, then that's the responsibility of the city manager. But when he gets character assassination pointed at him because if somebody got out on the wrong side of bed, it bothers me, because due process is all the average citizen or the taxpaying citizen that supports this community has to rely on. That's what you have to rely on. It makes this city work. Now, I'm gonna go to Article Number Two. We're gonna have to stop thinking outside the box when it comes to land use planning. We're noticing that in the state of California with these wildfires, and building up into areas where they should have never been, yada, yada, yada. This could take a half an hour, all-day session to talk about this. But one of the three things that we operate under here in this, in any city in the state of Oregon, is police protection, fire protection, and transportation. They protect lives. They provide a service. So outside the box with your, with the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, those people need to have a boulevard, at least five lanes out there, to accommodate industrial growth and residential growth in a safe, mannerly way. And we've got, quit dancing around this issue about what we're gonna do about transportation. Inevitably, it's gonna be a five-lane road out there that's gonna be required because of the demand and the need.
We didn't dance around it. That's what we said.
Well, okay, I'm putting my stamp of approval on it.
Thanks, sir. I have one comment to make, though, and that is, is that...
I'll give you five minutes.
I'll take whatever time I want. I gotta elect a mayor.
I got two legs. I can walk out.
I just wanna point out that Mr. Edgar and Ms. Webb's complaints have been taken to the city, looked at, adjudicated, taken to the city again, looked at by both Public Works and Code Enforcement and the police and the city manager's office. and the police and the city manager's office on numerous occasions. So this is not about a lack of due process.
Well, I'd like to comment further.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that.
And the tree cutting was lack of due process, too.
We're not gonna go there tonight.
I do feel we terminated that conversation prematurely because what is a process if you have a complaint about a performance of a city employee? Up to and including our top guy. What, does the public know what that process is? Do we, do we have it posted? Is it public knowledge? Here it is. If you have a complaint about any member of the city or the city commission even, here's how you pursue it. Yours would be different than ours.
I asked that question.
Well, I'm just putting in another phrase, Rocky. It's like, what is the process if you are unhappy or if you feel you've been treated unprofessionally or besmirched or whatever? Here's what you do, and here's where you go, and here's where you talk to.
It doesn't sound like we've done anything with it.
I don't know what it is.
But we will find out.
Point it out.
We will find out.
Okay.
End of story.
Commissioner McGriff, did you have something? I saw you on the speakers list and then you disappeared, so.
Well, you know, it is acting a little crazy here, this thing.
It has a tendency to do that sometimes.
Can I go or would you prefer it?
You may, you may take your leave, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. It's nice to see you. I just wanted to say that I'm hoping that we can, at least when we get back to discussing the issue in Kanema with the rights of way issues, that we can take that particular issue first and get it off the table, so to speak, because it's on the table right now.
I agree. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'll get us quickly back on something positive. I'm gonna pass out a compliment.
I still can't get over not having a mustache. It's sort of like looking at DJ Hennessy without a mustache.
I picked up a copy of the Winter Trail News, and that is, in the 12 years I've been in Oregon City, the best trail news ever. There is more really good information in there from the Public Works Department about what's happening there. The Malala Avenue Project. There's a lot of terrific information in there. So I want to compliment Kristen Brown and all the city staff that put that thing together. It's terrific. I do have a small suggestion. I have to admit, I was very surprised when the community survey came out, how many people, the trail news is their primary source of information about the city.
It is.
Because off the top of my head, I would have said, forget it, everybody's on the web. No, they're not. Two issues with the trail news. One, it only comes out four times a year. And the other thing is there, there's a lot of terrific information in this one, but there's also a lot of stuff that's in there every time. And I'm afraid that people might flip that thing, I've seen that, seen that, seen that. Suggestion, I know that thing's costly with a full cover and that many pages, you know, color cover, glossy, that many pages. Consider possibly two of those a year with more like four updates, eight pages, six pages, whatever, without the fancy cover, where you could provide more current information. Because that obviously is a source of information that the people in the Oregon City want to use, and I'd like to see us be able to get it in front of them more than four times a year without busting the budget.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
I, can I?
Sure.
So anyway, Mike, I would concur with you that people, you think, again, people might be on the web. I've gotten more questions about my Converse tennis shoes than, than anything because they read the article.
Okay, that was our last. Anybody else for community comment? See the comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, then we're gonna go to PC 19-125, first reading ordinance number 19-1018, annexation, zone change, seven lot subdivision, and a minor variance request for 14-7576 South Maple Lane Road, Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. This application is for about a one-acre piece. Our senior planner, Pete Walter, is here to tell you a little bit more.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Holiday. So this annexation, I'll just get the PowerPoint running here. It was a short presentation, not long.
Hold on, sorry. There we go.
Okay. This is located outside of the, just off of Thayer Road and Maple Lane area. So this is an area where we have a lot of existing new subdivisions. The applicant is Nathan and Desiree Rowland. Ms. Rowland is here this evening. Address is 14576 South Maple Lane Road. And as you can see, it is on the southeast corner of the intersection of Clearwater Place and Maple Lane Road. And when we annex property, we have a policy of annexing the entire right-of-way and budding the property as well. So this is.
Can you back that up a second?
Sure. We can refer back to this.
Still not quite sure where we're at.
I do have a bigger map. I'll refer to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have a seven lot subdivision along with a minor variance to lot depth for one of the lots. Transportation analysis indicated that with six new dwelling units in addition to the existing house, that would produce four new evening peak hour trips, six new, sorry, four new morning peak hour trips, six new evening peak hour trips, and 56 new weekday trips. The applicant is responsible for contributing to the improvements that it affects, including the Beaver Creek 213 intersection. This is part of our 1979 urban growth boundary, so it's not subject to any concept planning. And the applicant's subdivision application is going to be providing all street, sidewalks, sewer water, stormwater, and public utility improvements. Here's the larger.
Okay, that makes more sense.
So you can see the city limit there on the north side of Maple Lane. And that would be extended across to the east side of the property, abutting the site. It's currently zoned Future Urban 10, which is the county's holding zone for properties that are going to be annexed into the city. It has a comprehensive plan designation, medium density. So the zone change that they're requesting will be to R 3.5, which is 3,500 square foot lot minimum. And as you can see there, in the same area, that there's been a lot of subdivision development with that same zoning. To the west of there is some slightly larger lot subdivisions, R 6. This is a subdivision layout. You can see that the existing house on Lot 1 will be retained. It's a large lot, 9,400 square feet. The remaining lots are right around 3,000 to 4,000 square feet in size. This application was submitted prior to the current set of code amendments, so it was able to take advantage of the 20% lot averaging provision. But most of the lots are, have the depth and width that they exceed the minimums, with the exception of Lot 2, where you can see Lot 2 has a lot depth of 63. The minimum lot depth requirement is 65 feet. So they applied for a minor variance on that lot. And the circle, the red circle indicates that dimension. And that's the one dimension that they're requesting a variance for. And that qualifies as a minor variance, but since this is a bundled application with other things, the Planning Commission and the City Commission see the entire package, see the entire application. This is a current photograph looking to the north from Clearwater Place of the, of the house and the outbuilding. And this is looking back south from Maple Lane Road towards the property. As far as what happens with the annexation, if this is approved, it will become part of the Oregon City Police Department's enforcement area, and it will be removed from Clackamas River Water District. It will remain in the Oregon City School District and the Clackamas Fire District, and it will be required to annex separately to Tri-City Sewer Service District. We did not receive any public comments from, on this application. The Caulfield Neighborhood Association, there was a neighborhood association meeting prior to application, and they were very supportive of this application. The notes from the neighborhood association meeting are in the application. And the remaining comments are all from agencies, and they're fairly standard with respect to how public improvements would be made. The approval criteria spelled out in the staff report are listed here. They include Chapter 1404, which is our annexation chapter, our boundary change chapter, the zone change criteria, the subdivision criteria, and the minor variance criteria. And the application met all those standards with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. And the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this application to the City Commission. Thanks, and I will answer any questions if you have any.
Questions?
Yes. I know that the minutes aren't available yet from the Planning Commission meeting, so what was the general discussion? It just, if you can recall.
There was not a whole lot of discussion, as I recall. It was, we talked a little bit about the minor variance and the street improvements, why there was a, there was a question why there was a curve on, on, on the western thing. And part of that has to do with the radius of the curve that's required to have good sight distance, I believe, as you come to a T-intersection. So you can, it has to be as close to a right angle as possible under engineering standards. So that's, that's what. The vote at the time, I can't remember, but it was unanimous. It was, I think we were missing one commissioner, so it was either, it was 5-0.
Okay.
And you said that this was submitted prior to our code changes?
Correct.
Because, of course, I'm looking at this, and I know you know what I was gonna say. So I'm not gonna say it.
Okay.
You answered the question. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so before we have the applicant and open the public hearing, I would like us to have the discussion about annexations now. I offered the compromise that we just stop taking or considering new annexation applications until the, until the Court of Appeals or maybe the Supreme Court takes up the matter. Is that something that could be acceptable to the group? Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I guess, I wonder if the, sorry. I guess I wonder if we want to do that with all annexations or we want to make a, differentiate between teeny ones and versus larger ones. I don't know if we want to do that or we want to be consistent, but.
I hate to, I hate to, you know, do a division somewhere because then it's somehow arbitrary and, you know, when you get to be arbitrary, then, you know, legal beagles tend to step in and so. The other thing I did want to say about that proposal is, is that I do not think that we can, can make these folks abide by that since we're just talking about it today and they've spent money and time and gone through all the process to here. But we can, I'll leave that for another discussion later on.
I would prefer for us to keep going and not put these on hold only because we have a process for all of these properties to be reviewed. They go before the Planning Commission. All of the annexations that we've considered have, particularly the large ones, have had heavy public comment, heavy review. There's always gonna be folks that don't like the outcome. So there's always gonna be some folks who are unhappy with the decision. And so, if you watch the work session, you'll be no, don't be surprised by that.
For a change, I'm gonna sit down and let others talk for a bit. I mean, there's two, there's two considerations. What are we gonna do as a general approach and what are we gonna do about this particular?
Well, we're talking the general approach first, and then we'll have the public hearing. We'll talk about this application.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in. I would say that unless there is some dire health hazard problem, I would not support us considering any further annexations.
So my question about the size was basically about this one tonight, whether, you know. So we're making an exception anyway if we go with your proposal, which is to let this one through and then.
Well, I think it's only fair.
Well, I don't disagree. But that's why I would say, well, if we're doing it for this little one and it's gone through the process, then why would we say, well, you know, anything under? When I looked at the list of annexations that have come through since this was enacted, they were all under seven acres except for three.
Yeah, two or three.
And the drastic change between the seven was 30 and then 60 and then 100. So, I mean, I'd be open to saying, well, okay, do we say under five acres or under three acres or under whatever? I don't know, as an option to account for this and future ones that we know aren't going to be a strain on public services.
Mr. Geisman? Is there, from a legal standpoint, is there a better of two choices to make?
Better.
That's a legal term, isn't it, better?
In my head, what I'm thinking better is risk, you know? Where is the greatest risk for the city? I, you know, making an inform, my advice in terms of liability is almost always, make the decision that you think is right. We'll shape it in a way to protect the city against liability. And so that my advice is to act in what's right. To the extent we make a distinction between a five acre, three acre, whatever it is, and larger, you know, we can certainly put, you know, have some discussion about the impact on public services, the history in Oregon City of voter approval and do some things to provide some protection. Is it, you know, as we discussed earlier, Silverton has adopted an approach somewhat like that. You know, as far as I know, it's not been challenged. I think there is some liability that we take on, the potential for liability by not processing in general. Does allowing this smaller annexation policy reduce some of that liability? Possibly. Does it then provide an avenue for larger parcels to say they're being treated unfairly? Possibly, you know, and.
Well, yeah, I guess the issue is, we know going back in history that most all the small annexations have been approved by the citizens of this city. It's the big ones that haven't been. And, and so those, that's where the concern has always been. It's, it's a lot easier to look at something, a piece of property that's four or five acres and know that that's not gonna be a huge drastic drain on police services or park services or anything else. But when you get up into 30, 60, or 100 and some, that's a whole different, that's a whole different step.
So if you had, hang on. If you had a number, what would the number be? 10 acres?
Could be 10. I mean, we, we, I'm just going based on what we've saw in the last whatever year. Well, seven or six or seven, but maybe 10 is right? I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
Well, if we're gonna try to make a decision, we need to get to that number or say that we're just not gonna process applications. Commissioner McGriff?
I appreciate you're trying to, you know, as they say in Solomon, splitting the baby, so to speak, but I don't think it's gonna work. I think we either have to do one thing or the other. Part of the thinking that I have as a person with a planning background is that the two acre, the three acre, the five acre, the whatever, they all add up to something.
Right.
And so you have kind of the syndrome of a death by a thousand cuts. So it doesn't matter that it says, well, only these, this development will only have four trips and this will only have five trips. We start adding all those numbers up, it's, it becomes a bigger number. So I think it's either, it's either yes or it's either no. So we have, you know, if we can just make a decision on where we want to go with this, I think it'll just be better in the long run. We've made some decision and we've, you know, we've left it at that.
Commissioner Al Smith?
Thank you. I guess from a, from a legal standpoint, I would be really concerned that someone wouldn't say, you, you're doing an arbitrary and capricious policy and take us to court over it by picking, singling out larger tracks. I, I can't imagine that that would pass any muster in a court of law. And then if we also, if we do not process annexations according to the law, we could also, again, end up in a legal battle, which isn't unusual for us. But, you know, I would prefer for it to be because someone just was unhappy with our decision versus us not doing our job. doing our job, I guess, is, is where I land on that. And, and regarding larger pieces versus smaller, smaller pieces, I agree with Commissioner McGriff that those smaller pieces add up, and my opinion has always been, I like the larger pieces, because then we have more control over the planning of the whole thing.
Right.
Usually, a larger subdivision that's coming in may have enough transportation trips to trigger improvements that if one came in at five acres, the next one came in at five acres, it would take a lot more time to actually trigger transportation improvements, or other infrastructure improvements that we really want to see happen. And so for, for those reasons, I like that, you know, we can look at a chunk of land, whether it's sixty acres or ninety acres, and actually really plan it, and make sure it, it meets all of our checks and balances, which is why I feel like we have a system in place to do that. So, I, like I said, I stick with my earlier statement of where I'm at, but.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
My first question is for Ms. Turway. Do we have any, because this is because of the statement a mayor made that these folks have incurred these expenses to process this to this point in time, so there's a fairness issue. Do we have others in the, in the pipeline that are at different stages that have incurred additional expenses?
You have an emergency annexation, so a septic system?
That's a sewer thing, right?
Yeah, that's coming to you next time.
Okay, so moving on from there.
I eliminate those from consideration.
I am not aware of any other in the queue. You are not?
So we have a single instance here of this one, that.
And then we can change the vote.
No recent pre-apps or actual applications. There may have been further back pre-apps, but.
And as a matter of principle, I agree with Commissioner McGriff, it's like, just none, we're not going to process, I don't want to cut it up, either all or none, so none is my answer there. And I, as a matter of principle, I'd say no to this, but as a matter of fairness, I mean, these people have incurred a lot of costs, they're at a jumping off point, you know.
So does somebody have a motion?
Well.
I'm not certain you're at a decision point in term, you know, we're in the middle of, we had, the staff report, you haven't had the public hearing on this. What I would recommend is going forward, hearing the application, opening the public hearing, making a decision on that one, and then if you want a more general policy after that, have that discussion.
Okay, I'm good. Let's, I'll open the public hearing, and let's hear from the applicant.
I'm Desiree Rowland, Oregon City, and so this is our property, and we did start the pre-app back in April, turned in the application in July, so we have been actively working on it for some time, hoping for, obviously, a decision so that we can move forward. This is my husband and I's personal project, you know, so it, it does make a big difference for us, so. Did you have questions for me on it? Or, I mean, it's just a small project for us, just starting out, you know, but this does make a big difference, so.
Do we have anybody else for comment on this item?
No.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and we can debate. Thank you. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PC 19-125, First Reading of Ordinance Number 19-1018, Annexation Zone Change, Seven Lot Subdivision and Minor Variance Request for 14576 South Maple Lane Road.
All seconded, just to get it on the floor.
Okay, so it's moved seconded. Now, is there some discussion to be had?
Well, I think I stated my position. I mean, as a matter of principle, I'd say no. As a matter of fairness, the people have incurred some significant dollars to get them to this point, given the size of the project, I won't do it again, but I would, I'll get this one through.
Commissioner Al Smith?
Sure. I think this is in a great location, filling in some holes in current development that is already medium density, so it's a good infill project. They are stepping up, and they're meeting all of our infrastructure improvements, sidewalks, water, sewer. I, I feel like it's moving that one acre piece in the right direction. Like I said, it's, it's kind of a inside, well inside with development all the way around it. I think it's a good project for development, so I support it.
Anybody else? Call roll. First reading. I'm sorry, Mr. Geisman.
Ordinance Number 19-1018, ordinance of the City of Oregon City, approving an annexation, amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.06.020, and amending the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code, from FU10 Future Urban 10 Acres to R3.5 Residential District, approving a seven lot subdivision and a minor variance to lot depth for one acre of property identified as Clackamas County Map, 3-2E-04DB, tax lot 200.
Call roll.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How are we minimizing the risk with this, as opposed to any different than picking and choosing smaller lots? I mean, if we make a decision on letting this one through, and then everyone after this, we're basically opening ourselves up to the same issues we would have the other way.
Well, you're, you're in the same stormy sea, no matter what you do here, so.
Except for we're being forced to vote on this before we actually make a decision.
Nobody's being forced to do anything.
Right, which is why I'm asking the question.
So, all, I think where Commissioner O'Donnell and I are at is that these folks have gone through a process.
I get that, I agree.
And we hadn't had any discussions about changing our policy up until a week or two ago. And so now we draw the line, say, from this point forward, there aren't any other applications in the pipeline, and it's, it's clean that way.
I feel the same way. I mean, I hate it when the majesty of government focuses on one small citizen, and sometimes you have to use common sense, and yes, I believe in home rule, and yes, a week from now, if somebody started this process and came in, the answer is no, regardless of size. But tonight, I'm going to vote to approve this small one. I won't do this, I won't do it from this, once we make our decision after this meeting, don't come here looking for that.
And I fully agree with both your viewpoints, however, that's not the question I asked to the attorney.
What's the question?
Whether or not that is any different than the risk that we're trying to avoid by...
I answer, I think the mitigating factor is where the process is at this point in time.
You know, whatever course the city chooses, there is potential liability. Again, you know, what I, what I would recommend is, you do what's right.
That's what I think.
Okay, got it. Call roll.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lylesmith.
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
The applicants, I just want you to know, this is nothing personal. I think your development is okay. I don't totally agree with everything Rachel said, but in concept, yes, and so because I believe that the charter supersedes, I'm going to have to, in good conscience, vote no. It has nothing to do with your development, it's just I believe that voter annexation by the City of Oregon City citizens needs to happen, regardless of what size it is, or, you know, who it is. So it's nothing personal against you, it's just sticking with what I said earlier. So, and I know that this is going to pass, so, there you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Upstained.
And Mayor Dan Holiday?
Aye. Motion carries. We shall move on.
Good luck with that.
Next is.
I thought we were going to vote on our...
Well, yeah, I'm going to turn to see where we're at. So let's go ahead and, and make that decision, we'll add this to, to the seven under general business. We had a motion and a second to hold, to not process any applications after this one.
I'm trying to remember the motion, and second there is discussion.
We had a motion by Rachel and, by Commissioner Al Smith, and I believe it's seconded by...
No, it was only for the reading.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, so is there, does someone wish to make a motion on how we want to proceed going forward? Don't everybody talk at once?
I think in the, based on the discussion that I, pretty sure that I think I heard, that we are looking for the middle ground, that as of effective, as of this date, that we will not be processing any further annexations, and I think you said something to the effect of pending the outcome of.
Appeals Court.
Appeals Court. So I think that's what you said.
Can I pop in with the old emergency annexation question, too? I'm not sure if, how broad your policy is.
Emergencies, I think are separate, separate category, that they've always been.
Just clarifying for the record.
Yep. Understanding that, in the applications that come in that are joint, that we may be forced to process those, right? Because two pieces of their land use and one piece is annexation?
So, you know, the applicant always controls their application, they can choose to, to file them jointly, to the extent a process that's subject to the 120-day rule is dependent upon the outcome of the annexation, we can process it if they want, but the outcome is sort of predetermined if the annexation is not moving forward.
All right, good answer.
Well, okay, now you just opened another can here. So can, so I'm trying to put myself in the position of staff, somebody comes in and says, I want to file for an annexation. So do I say to them, we're not processing annexations, and I'm not going to accept it? Or we're not processing annexations, and I'm going to accept it? What would be the, what would be the likely, what do you think, Tony, what's the likely?
Obviously, I'd rather have, I'd rather have people allowed to go through the process than then voted no. They've gone through the process, it gives them something to appeal, and you've at least reviewed the process, there's potentially conditions of approval, that if you do get mandamist, you know, potentially you could get those into the record. I think, I think that there are definitely benefits to just sitting up here and denying applications, rather than just not accepting them. But we, if you want us, I mean, we'll only accept them if they agree to go to a vote of the people, I mean, you know, I think there's things to think about there, but.
Can we do that?
Could you?
Sure.
Sure, you can come up with whatever you want. I mean, it's, I just think, I think you take on more risk, and maybe I'm wrong, of just not even accepting something at the counter that's in your code.
Well, I'd, I'd rather accept them with the condition that it goes through the process of getting voter approval. I'd feel a lot better about it.
But I guess, if someone's not going to, so what, so, okay, there's that, there's that route.
Sure, there's that route.
There's the route where it says, no, we're not going to, we're not going to do that, so who?
No, who's saying no? You mean the voters say no?
No, the applicant says, I'm not going to send this to a vote of the people, process my application.
They don't want to, okay.
Right, process my application. So, you know, is it staff that says, sorry, we're not taking it at the counter? Is it, we run it through, Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and the commission denies it because of the policy?
Let's do this. So we already have some ideas from Silverton. Why don't you guys take a couple of weeks, look around, see how other cities, basically our size, are handling this, and then come back with some recommendations for policy? Is everybody okay with that? We don't have anything in the pipeline, so we have, we have time, and rather than try to rush this decision, let's get some more info.
Yes, Silverton is not a comparable city.
No, I get that, but, you know, what's like us, we go doing, what's, you know, Tiger doing? Tiger's a little bit bigger than us, but.
It's Corvallis, my understanding, is processing them, aren't they?
That's what I've heard, but I will have to look into that.
Let's do some staff work.
What are they doing?
Processing them, under Senate Bill 1573.
What does that mean? They're processing them, but what does that mean?
So that they're accepting them, they're running through the land use process?
And they're voting.
And they're approving annexations without voter approval.
I see.
They've requested a stay, the court denied the stay, they're following, you know.
And again, their arguments were specific, but, and the Benton County ruling doesn't apply to Clackamas County until the appeals court rules.
Would it be, I understand, I understand what you're asking for here. So my, it's always, if we pick ten acres, you're going to get, you're going to get ten acre applications, right? If we pick seven, you're going to get seven, right? So if we don't, so I feel like there's probably three votes that essentially would say, we would like staff to come up with an annexation policy, that we will not approve annexations unless they go to a vote of the people. Something similar to that in flavor.
I agree with that.
In that, until we have that policy in place, because, you know, let's say we don't get back to U2 for a month from now, I could have, somebody could come in and apply.
I don't want that to happen.
Okay, so is there a motion that says something to that effect, that we've directed staff, that our current policy is that we're not going to approve annexations that don't require a vote of the people?
Yeah.
And that's probably good enough that we can tell someone at the counter, look, until the Court of Appeals, and once the Court of Appeals says, you're going to probably have folks come in and say you should, the Supreme Court's going to address it, right? But right now, our understanding is that you want to wait until you hear from the Court of Appeals, and we can tell people that.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Well, moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, everybody understand?
I don't, well, I guess the part that I'm not comfortable with is, I don't really care what the Court of Appeals, I do, well, let me say this, I do care what the Court of Appeals is going to say, but until it's.
Finalized.
Until the fat lady sings, so to speak, or the fat person sings.
Well, we have that discussion at the, that goalpost, and then we talk about it then, and we make a decision.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Call roll.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lylesmith.
No.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holiday.
Aye.
I'd like to ask an explanatory question.
Go ahead.
Somebody comes in with a single house on ten acres with a failed septic system, and we annex in the whole ten acres? And then they say, well, I'm in now.
Yes.
Oh, I'm not doing that.
But you can always put conditions on.
You can't not do it. The state law requires, if they're within 300 feet of a, of a city sewer line, you have to annex them.
But you see, it goes, it circumvents our intent, which is like, you come in with a hundred acres and say, my house, the septic system has failed.
Well, but typically, like, in the, in the Park Place Annexation, that was a semblage of many, many different owners. So if you have a ten acre parcel that is all one tax lot, there's no way to, there's no way to cut that up. We had the vote, we're moving on. So we're now at second reading of ordinance number 19-1011, adding Chapter 8.26 Business Food Waste Requirements to the Oregon City Municipal Code. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, so.
There might.
This is the second reading of the Business Food Waste Requirements for the Oregon City, and I didn't have any slides to share with you tonight.
Oh, darn. I love your slides, John.
So, again, you approved this at the last meeting, and we're asking you to approve the second reading, I can, is there any questions?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Geisman.
Ordinance Number 19-1011, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code by adding a new Chapter 8.26 Business Food Waste Requirements.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Yes?
Just want to get moving.
Make a question.
Yeah, question. Just let's move it up.
I don't need you to do that for me, thank you. Is there anybody from the audience want to say anything? Okay, call roll.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
I'll take the lump for others up here and say yes.
Commissioner Rachel Lylesmith.
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Absolutely not.
And Mayor Dan Holiday.
Thanks, Frank.
Go ahead, you're the hero.
I can't be the hero now.
Well, you can make a statement.
Aye.
Thanks, Dan, for sticking up for me.
All right, moving on. 1619639, requested change the system development charge, discount area boundary, Mr. Lewis.
I'm sorry, there's one here.
I hope we can keep this fairly simple, without a whole lot of technical explanations.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, we can, we can keep this one relatively simple, the applicant is here to discuss it, and, really, this is a policy, there's kind of a policy question first, which is, is the City Commission interested in expanding our two discount district, STC discount districts, so we're trying to get that map up here, and we think it makes sense, it's, we've got two discount districts, one's Malal Avenue Quarter, which includes Seventh Street, the other one's the downtown mixed-use design district, and in between the two is a small gap, which is really right across the street from City Hall, and so, the, where's my pointer on this? So, I'm going to point up at the map, but it's, it's this, the, basically, the three properties across from City, City Hall and High Street, between the City Hall Municipal Parking Lot, and really, kind of the Singer Hill Bluff, and, right now, that district is important, it, it does have some real advantages when it comes to transportation SDCs in particular, and in this case, we've laid out some of the benefits to this decision for those property owners.
And in this case, we've laid out some of the benefits to this decision for those property owners. Why it was missed, you know, these were, these were set before my time. I don't have a lot of.
It was missed, doesn't matter. Let's move on.
Okay. With that, the applicant's here to talk if you want to hear, hear from them. But to me, it's really just a policy question about whether or not you're willing to expand this corridor.
Mr. James, you want to come up, please?
Dan, before he comes up, I've read everything that I possibly could read on this, and I still really don't understand what this is.
I don't either, and I wanted to ask questions for clarification.
Let's, let's hear from the applicant, and then, and then we can ask their questions, okay?
Sure.
Maybe you take a shot at explaining it too while you're at it.
I think I'll leave that to the city. Well, so my name is Ben James. I own the property across the street, Elevate Plaza, 650 High Street. I own the property on 1297th Street. I am the current chair of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce and a business owner in Oregon City. So I'm here to request that you consider including the three properties just on the other side of the street into the discount zone. And so my understanding is that the discount zone is, is there to encourage economic development, to give businesses and property owners the opportunity to do things like change of use without incurring substantial STC charges. So in our particular case, we have about a 1,200 square foot empty space in the building, and we have been engaging in conversations with Bent Shovel Brewery to open a tap house. And as it stands right now, not being in the discount zone, the implications would be approximately $125,000 to change, change use, which I think amounts to about $100 per square foot. So it's a substantial cost for us. So I would say probably without the opportunity to be in the discount zone, I wouldn't foresee much change of use outside of office at that particular building. So I'm, I understand it's late in the evening, and this, you guys are hard at work, and I appreciate the diligence that you've had. And I don't necessarily want to go on into too much detail, so. But I'm prepared to talk about kind of my background with the property, some surveys that we've done, kind of polling the audience to find out what they would like to see there, as well as the results from those surveys, the preparation that we did in anticipation of this meeting, our rationale behind the request, and then some, some benefits that we feel we might see as a result of changing the use in the property. So without any objections, I can, I can kind of go into that.
I'm surprised somebody asked you about a Trader Joe's.
Really? I'm pretty asked about Trader Joe's.
They would never go there, but.
I know. So I, I got into the building, and this is kind of the lower portion of this slide we see. And it, it was in 2015, and I rode by the building on my bike to, to work for about a year. And I kept, I kept ignoring the building because of the state it was in, and I couldn't figure out why it was vacant. And when I finally got over the mustard, yellow, and red hot dog ketchup look, I realized it was a really cool building at a really interesting spot in our city. And I was, then I stepped back and I thought, why isn't this some public use building? Why isn't it some, some asset for the city at the top of the Oregon City elevator that could be shared and enjoyed with people, with a, with a prominent courtyard? So I was able to get the building, and we started improvements. Kind of show you what it looks like today, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, although we have Christmas lights up now. It's a great looking building, and it's, it's, it's great. The only problem that I, I feel is that it's still occupied primarily by offices. And to the extent we did our best job, when we first got into the building, we, we had some signage up. Many of you may remember, you know, what would you like to see here? And part of that was admittedly just trying to drum up the interest in the property for tenants. But we did, we did get close to 500 votes. We were picked up by Oregon Live, which, you know, gave us a flurry of votes at the end. And primarily, the results of the votes, and this is, the data's, don't judge me by the data. We pulled up the spreadsheet, but the overwhelming vote for people that live nearby, work nearby, was let's have a brewery, coffee house, or a restaurant. So if we take our top three, people said, hey, this is a great spot for mixed use. This is, they don't want to see an accountant or a financial advisor in this spot, which is kind of what we have. And we want to surely kick those tenants out, because I'm one of them, but there's a substantial amount of this building that could be dedicated to more of a community friendly type of business. So thank you, John, for kind of going, going over the, the map as, as we saw it. There, there's really two different sections of the discount zone, the Seventh Street corridor, as well as the, kind of the downtown Main Street. And, and looking at how they kind of stack up together. If you look at the top of this slide, the kind of the yellow highlighted area, this is a 3D map, which tries to illustrate that the, the top of the elevator, which is the top of Elevate Street, thank you, is really the connecting piece that ties these two areas in together. And we, after looking at it, we thought we might have a logical argument to, to make a case that maybe we were overlooked in the process of designing the discount zone, which again, I think was really about encouraging best use of the property and encouraging development within our city. So in preparation for this meeting, I reached out to Doka. Thank you, Liz. And I've got a letter of support from her and the organization, along with the Oregon City Business Alliance, and as well as the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And again, I am the current chair of the board. That was the hardest one to get, for whatever reason.
That's why.
Yeah. There was maybe a conflict. My neighbors that are also proposed in the property, Carrie Mitchell, with the Carrie Mitchell Accounting Building, has submitted a letter as well, supporting the idea. And Tim Tofti, who owns the, I guess it's, used to be the Poe Building, but.
Right.
The beautiful Poe Building. So, and I'm currently in conversations with the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. I've reached out to them. I've gotten the message out that these were our intentions. That came pretty short, or pretty late notice in this process, so I wasn't able to receive a letter from them. I talked to our, probably our closest neighbor, Bill Daniels, who lives obviously in the house next to Carrie's property. Talked to him, and he, he had expressed some concerns primarily about parking and noise, which, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to address. The big parking issue, you know, from our perspective is, you know, with the City Hall potentially opening up parking, that's going to alleviate a lot of the concerns. We feel like the traffic that we see, I mean, going up the elevator every day, it's, it's 1,000-ish people, maybe, maybe less. Depends on who you're talking to that's running it. There's a lot of people. I'm tempted to sit in my office most of the day and stare out the window at all the people coming and going. There's a lot of people. What they don't have right now is a reason to linger longer at the top of the elevator. They get up there, they look around, and they're, and they go. Which is a shame, because it's, it's an asset for the city. So changing the use of the properties up there would certainly encourage people to hang out and be able to do something. Liz expressed it really well when she talked about the, kind of the leapfrog concept. You know, people spend time downtown, and they get to the top of the elevator, and they don't naturally make the leap to midtown. So Elevate Plaza, along with the other properties, could be the lily pad that encourages that leap. Part of what we feel like the benefits could potentially be is, you know, we, we could have a continuity of tourism. You know, we, we're calling ourselves a tourist destination. I think this would certainly help that, if not the, you know, the, the, the various different trails. There's a brew tap trail coming out. I think having a brewery at the top of the elevator would support that. Linger longer, certainly a reason to stay. The other thing that we kind of considered in then being the property owner is looking at, you know, when we took this thing to development, from what it was to where it is now, we certainly don't have the people suffering from homelessness issue that we had before up there. But we still have it, and I think that whole promenade could be a little safer and feel a little bit better with some more development up there. So I think that could be a side benefit. Outside of that, Mr. Strauss, Rick Strauss with Bent Shovel is here to answer any questions. If you've got him, anything in mind.
I think we're getting a little far in the weeds for this proposal. So, of course, thanks for your time. And, John, you want to explain now, you know, in short order, what exactly is going on? What is going to cost the city? I don't really care why it's not in there, but, you know, just so that the rest of the commission can understand what's going on here.
Yeah, so back in 2009, when the city adopted transportation STCs, they also looked at ways to deal with what were, at the time, considered pretty high STCs. There, we've come way above that now, but they looked at opportunities for both redevelopment. And then, so it's, it's somewhat driven by that, but it's mostly driven about a methodology that says, in the mixed use design districts, downtown area, for instance, there's a lot of shared use trips, kind of like a shopping center has, right? So when you drive into a shopping center, the idea there, and the reason why their trip generation rate is so low, and I can talk about trip generation rates too, so I can go through that. But the reason why they're so low is because people come, they may stop at two or three locations within that facility. And that's the same methodology that was used in this designation for these two zones, was that people are coming there, they're more often to walk, bike, use transit, and live in the mixed use downtown areas. So we haven't yet seen, until we saw the COG development, a lot of living down there. But those are the kind of things that, that this, this whole methodology is based on that theory. And so by designating those, the, the highest designation in that mixed use downtown, as far as a trip rate, is for, is designated as shopping center. So right now, that existing building has a credit for the fact that it's a office building, which has a trip generation rate slightly less than shopping center. So if all you were doing was really bringing in something like a shopping center or something with a, a lower trip generation rate, the, the amount that the city would essentially lose because of that development coming in is pretty low. But the, the more trips that the particular business generates in that zone, the bigger the gap in terms of what we would collect if they were outside of the zone. So for instance, if it were a fast food restaurant, McDonald's, for instance, like that, with the drive-through, they generate a lot of trips. If they're inside a shopping center, if their facility's inside a shopping center, they get the shopping center rate, also if they're inside what we've designated as these discount rate areas. So that's, it applies to all those areas. That's been a long time policy since 2009. And really, the question is, is should there be along what we consider the Seventh Street corridor, as it comes from the downtown, through the elevator, or up the elevator, and through the elevator, back out on Seventh Street? Should that have been included originally? I think that's the question here. And we've not considered it before, because we haven't had an applicant that's really raised it. Or, to be honest with you, I hadn't noticed the gap there.
So is, does anybody need more explanation?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Then why are we not making a recommendation to pass this? Why, why is staff not making a recommendation? And we know that we clearly forgot it, and it was left out.
Well, I don't, again, I wasn't, I wasn't at this position in 2009, so forgot. And I hadn't noticed it, maybe is a better way of putting it.
I think what Commissioner Smith is asking, why is staff report doesn't recommend?
Yeah, why are we not making a recommendation, one way or another?
Well, because I think it's a policy decision. We can recommend, I mean, we, we actually support the idea. We just wanted to hear from you.
You didn't say that, though.
Well, I know, we didn't. Our, our intent is to not ask you for a decision tonight. We're trying to get, really, if, if there's interest in the commission making a decision that supports this, we'll bring it back, and you will make a decision. And we'll provide a recommendation. But in this case, we wanted to be neutral on that. And, but we think it's the right thing to do, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Commissioner Smith?
We would have told the applicant, we didn't necessarily think it was a recommendation. If he wanted to bring it forward, then we could.
Here's the problem.
Disclose that.
The problem is this. If the applicant knew that staff was making a recommendation, they wouldn't have gone through the whole work to get 15 letters of recommendation and, and go through all the work that they did if it was simply, we forgot it in that block. And that's what bothers me, especially when you started off saying it was overlooked. So why wouldn't the report to say it was overlooked? We recommend that this gets placed back in. They don't have to go through months of trying to get support to convince us that it's a right decision when everyone knows it's a right decision, and we have to sit through all of this paperwork. It's frustrating. It, it, I just don't get it. And, and I, I know that that, it just seems, everyone up here knows it, it was left out. Everyone knows that when you read this methodology, there's no other site in either two sections of the city that meet this methodology more than that site. None of them. I mean, you know, even the Seventh Street corridor going all the way up to Eastham, no one is stopping up there and going to multiple locations and get back. But are they doing it at the elevator? Yes, we know that just by going by the elevator. 90% of the people that are going to stop there at that, at that, that new business are on foot. We know that. So why did we have to go through all this? I, I think it's embarrassing. And I, I think it, it wastes people's time, and I think it also implies to the business, this continuation of, we don't support businesses, and we're not trying to be active in helping them. I, I don't even know why we're wasting the time on it.
Okay. Commissioner Lausmer?
Well, I appreciate the time that we're spending on this, because I was not aware of the discount zone. I agree with Commissioner Smith, and I'm not sure why it goes all the way up Seventh Street, and, or how the boundary even got drawn. I actually prefer for him to not be sitting there, because for me, this is a policy decision, and I don't want to make the decision based on a particular business that I may support the business, but this is a policy decision. And so for me, this has nothing at all to do with what I hope goes in there and is successful. But my question is, what keeps another business that's just on the other side of Center Street from coming in and making the same argument and saying, well, why don't you make that little red line one block over, and now you can include my business? Because people could walk, you know, if I park at the library, then I could walk if I park at City Hall, or if I park, you know, I mean, I, I'm concerned about making expansions to a box just because we think it's, it's a good reason. I, I support the business, but I, I, I have questions about the boundary in general, and I, and I have concerns about us changing that boundary. Essentially, we're saying that this is going to be a discretionary choice anytime a property owner comes up and says, well, why don't you just move the boundary? Because I feel like my business does this or that, and.
I think my, under the, under the recommendations from the Transportation System Development Study, you know, one of the findings was that the city should consider a policy of providing the above-mentioned transportation system discount charge adjustment only for permitted uses in the regional center or on Malala Avenue. And then the decision was made to extend it down Seventh and go in one tax lot, essentially, because it fronted on Seventh, which is the transit quarter. So I think one way to look at this is, you know, is it part of that Seventh Street corridor? Or is it part of our regional, downtown regional center because of its proximity on the bluff and access from the elevator? You know, could, could that be the justification for why not the next, next property owner, you know, halfway up Seventh? You know, I think that there's pretty clear what they did there in terms of taking the one tax lot in off Seventh that had frontage, for the, for the most part. And so, you know, is this part of the regional center? I think would be a good rationale from a policy.
I guess that's the thing, is I, I, I want whatever change we make to have really defensible reason of why it aligns with the corridor, and which is why I wanted to take the business part out of it, because it's no reflection of my opinion of the business or what's going in there, or what I hope will be a good business and succeed. I guess my final comment is, I hear complaints, I think we've heard complaints regularly from citizens saying that we're not collecting up STCs because we can't pay for the roads that we want or improvements we, we want. And so I have a real concern when I'm hearing that, that we're discounting the $100,000. I mean, I feel sorry, kind of feel for them, but that's, that's no small. We're not discounting $10,000 or even, I mean, $100,000 of a discount is a significant chunk of money that is not going to our transportation system. And so I'm trying to, I'll just put that out there. I'm, I'm struggling with, with that piece, but if we can make a real defensible rationale of why, like, this property would fit versus not other properties in that area, and how it supports the, the discount area, then.
I think, let's not forget that the elevator is actually a street.
And it's designated as a street. And it's, and that's, that block is part of that map that was just left out. I mean, you can clearly see that all down Seventh Street is accounted for, except for that one piece.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, initially, like Commissioner Lausme Smith, I went, wow, $100,000 discount. But then I started thinking about it and I presume that's, consider that those are going to be vehicular trips?
Right, that the discount isn't a vehicle trip.
You know, and I questioned that application as one who happens to wander into taverns now and then and knowing, knowing the people that live in McLaughlin neighborhood, they tend to walk to taverns and I view it as an extension of the downtown area because of its proximity to it. Also, I sat in on an SDC thing with the county. What will the traffic SDCs actually be? Is that, is that $3,700?
You mean for this particular property? Yeah, that.
Being used as its future, is it a microbrewery? Is that what it'll be?
Yeah, potentially.
Okay.
A taproom.
Okay, well, but they're probably going to, their water consumption is probably going to go up.
No, as I, as I understand it, there will be no brewing in this location. It'll be a taproom similar to the one on Seventh.
So what's the transportation? I see numbers, but they say about offsetting numbers. What's the actual SDC, the transportation?
So the additional, additional SDC that would be charged to this applicant, based on the estimated square footage that they provided, is $3,724. They get a credit for their existing use, which is, has a value of $15,054.68.
So where does this $100,000 figure come from?
So the discount is if we did, if we considered the building, if this same business proposal was made outside of the discount area, the transportation SDC would be $114,075.86.
All right.
So it's, I hear that the discount is significant. It does surprise me. It's based, you know, all those ITE codes are published and part of our methodology and how we calculate those SDCs. And interestingly enough, taproom is one of the higher uses. So despite the walk-up traffic, they still generate a fair amount of.
Again, we're not talking about the use, we're talking about the policy. So let's get back to the policy. Do you have anything else? Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, I honestly feel it's an extension of the downtown area.
Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, I agree that I would prefer to be talking about this. I don't want to talk about a use at all. As you can well imagine, over the last few weeks, my phone and personal contacts by members of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association have increased exponentially because they have a lot of, and you're laughing because I know, I know that you met with Bill, but he, because he told me, but I did not discuss the conversation, just I knew that you were going to meet with him.
Sorry for that, Denise.
It's okay, I would have laughed too. So I don't want the two things to be co-mingled and if you were here making a request to add your property and without any use, I, you know, I'm just going to forget that. But I just want people to know that yes, I have been contacted. There are many, many, many concerns. There's a lot of unintended consequences with regard to the use, which we can discuss later and I can talk to you about it later. So I don't want to talk about anything that's going to go in there because you and I talked about a coffee shop, which has a much lesser impact than this. But I think that to try to do a little back history, because I had completely forgotten about this, but I remembered it being applied to Seventh Street because the city did a major urban renewal project on Seventh Street to improve it for the businesses there. And I think it has been wildly successful. I won't say that the traffic has slowed down because now it's speeded back up again, but we're working on that. So Seventh Street is, you know, one of those corridors where it is one block off and then there are residential districts. And so there are some issues with some of the current taverns on there because of people coming out of there, whatever state they are, and then getting into the neighborhood. But, you know, we're working on that. But I think that we should look at this again from a policy standpoint, whether we want to include it or not. And it is a policy question and I totally agree with you, what you said about, we want to have some very clear definitive criteria because again, I don't want this to be nickelled and dimed and somebody coming down saying, well, we want to be in, we want to be in. No, that's not what I want to look at. So I appreciate the fact that you are asking us, Mr. Lewis, for a policy decision, not a decision about the specific request. And that's where it really needs to, to go because it is a policy decision.
Commissioner Lausme.
So I guess to circle back, it sounds like, I feel like Commissioner Smith and Commissioner O'Donnell have, have made good arguments of why, you know, this is an extension of the street and we can, and we can make a good policy decision based on that. It just concerns me when the boundary has all kinds of jigs and jags and, you know, just, just be careful.
Well, you haven't lived there that long. We've got a lot of jigs and jags all over this town.
Well, we didn't share with you is the entire boundary. I mean, obviously it goes up Malala as well. We amended it more recently to include the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So we have some precedent there. I think we can bring you the defensible reasons and clear criteria. My proposal would be that we, you know, we wanted to have a little bit of a discussion here. I'm seeing clearly now the fact that we could have bifurcated the business proposal and just talked specifically about the policy. So I totally take that on and accept that the, but we'd, what we'd like to do is bring you back a resolution that would be specific to these properties, adding them as, with the defensible reasons and clear criteria.
Let's, let's do that. This isn't going to require, at this point in time, I think everybody's on board with that, but we would like to see the entire map of the entire zones so that, you know, it isn't cut off in the middle and we wonder what, where that little red line goes next. And, you know, see if we can keep that fairly brief.
Sure.
So with that, we'll move on. Consent agenda, everybody okay with consent agenda?
Yes, I would so move.
Move. Move and seconded, color roll, please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lausme.
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
And Commissioner Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye. Mr. Man, if you got anything?
Got an update from Ms. Turway.
Thank you, I have two things. First, it's that time of year again, we're doing our neighborhood tree planting with our project with Friends of Trees. We are planting about 94 trees over 49 properties within seven neighborhood associations this Saturday. We have 100 people signed up to help volunteer. We're always accepting more volunteers. We're going to meet at the Zion Lutheran Church at 720 Jefferson Street on Saturday morning. We'll start at 9:00 AM. If you can get there by 8:45 and register, that would be great. But thank you for the commission. This is funded by our Tree Mitigation Fund. So it's always good to see this happening. The other thing I have is for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project or the Blue Heron Property, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron are hosting an open house to talk about their environmental assessment cleanup and their grant application associated with that. It's going to be Tuesday, November 26th, at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. They're going to start with an open house from 5:30 to 6:00 PM, followed by a presentation at 6:00 PM. There is information posted on our website and then we'll send out an email to get the word out as well and other things.
Okay.
Oops, sorry.
Well, sorry, anyway, are we, are we ever going to get sort of a neat meeting with them? I know various people have met with them, but I sure would like that and I know I've expressed that to you before.
Meeting with who?
The Grand Ron.
Like a welcoming?
Chairperson or somebody.
We've been working on scheduling something between you two.
Okay, perfect, I thought it was still underway.
We're shooting for January, but we're, yeah.
You two, who?
Between the tribal council and yourself.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah. The mayor had approached with a question about the Willamette Falls locks. He's involved with the locks commission over there and about the investment into the project over there for some of the work that we're doing. Historically, we've, we've put funds in as a partner from the city. We, in the biennial budget, we appropriated $7,000 for each year. I think the request is for $10,000. So he just wanted me to give you an update that it's, it's in the budget. It's a little over what we had put in there, but it's, we can, we can make that work and then we're going to start making those, make that.
And I can explain a little bit more. So as we move, transition from, the plan is right now to transition from the locks commission to a private, a public corporation that's going to take over the system. And part of that is ongoing operations and maintenance money. And so it's been, you know, sectioned out by, you know, the small local jurisdictions. It is about $90,000 and it's about nine jurisdictions. So like Marion County has a little piece of it because they're close by and so on and so on. So I just suggested that we ask for $10,000 from each of those jurisdictions. I volunteered us to be first so that we can say that we're the ones that are stepping up to the plate and hopefully we'll get some other, we're working on some other funding sources, but that's just the short explanation.
That's great, I totally support that and I think that we need to be actively involved in it. As many of you are aware, it is on the list for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which I sit on their board, and it is considered one of the nationwide national treasures. And so I think Oregon City stepping up first is excellent. Thank you for suggesting that.
Sure, okay.
And last, after being with us for a little over a year, Claudia has accepted a position as the city recorder with the city of McMinnville.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will hate to see her go. She actually lives in McMinnville and commutes an hour a day back and forth to Oregon City.
Oh, that sucks for you, huh?
She's been, she's been a wonderful asset for the city. Really appreciate all that you've done for us and just wish her the best. She'll do amazing work as a city recorder in McMinnville. And so her last day is Thursday, December 5th.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's all that I have.
Tony, I had a building.
Oh, sorry, yep.
Chief.
So I haven't done a building update. I've got two pictures.
Oh, Mo's got you beat, man.
Yeah, she does. So if you're wondering what that is, that's your commission chambers. The sort of interesting thing standing there, if, if, does this have a pointer?
Yeah.
This right here, all this, there's 20,000 feet of conduit.
Yep.
Oh, go back, I just did that. 20,000 feet of conduit. So you can kind of see, I think, all this stuff down here is in the floor, how we've got it designed for multiple uses. In addition to being a commission chambers, it will also be able to turn into a emergency operations center.
So the blue is, the blue is called Schmerf Tube and that holds low voltage stuff like data and fiber optics.
Is that PVC or is it aluminum?
It's a combination.
So the, if you've been by there, there's been, oh, there's one more picture here actually. If you wonder what dealing with stormwater looks like, that is a gigantic retention tank that is going to be under the back parking lot, the secure parking lot. That fence you see there is the one that runs between the property and the apartment complex. Those are obviously buried now under the site, but if you want scale them, you can see a contractor, a construction worker down there standing next to them, they're gigantic.
Three yellow big pipes.
I know, yeah. That whole thing snapped together, it's pretty interesting technology.
Look at that thing.
I got a question for you.
John Lewis is beaming.
Okay, so the only thing I'll say, the only thing left to say is that if you go by there, about a third of the slab is poured. That was poured a couple of weeks ago and right now they're kind of looking, doing a bunch of weather forecasting in competition with a bunch of other construction projects. And by Thanksgiving, I think that the other two, two-thirds of this slab will get poured. The CLT, which is making up the walls and.
CLT.
Cross laminated timber.
Thank you.
That is, that is going to start arriving. It is coming from British Columbia and that will start probably going up. So people will see walls going up around the middle of December. That's all I got.
Oh, there is actually one additional item. Between the city departments, today we came to an agreement that the police department will pay a fee in lieu instead of undergrounding the electrical that was being required by building. And thereby we are saving two oak trees that are on the property.
Good.
So that's just an update.
Well, I was just going to ask the chief, if the oak trees have to come down, are you going to make some furniture or something out of them?
They are going to stay where they're at, as you just heard.
Thank you. So, but if you have any other trees, are you considering using the trees for some bookshelves or?
So, so one, one kind of cool thing on that, there were, I don't know if I told you before, but two of the, there were two timbers that measured 11, well, I'm sorry, there were six or eight, we kept two of them, 11 by 15, a true 11 by 15, and they were 15 feet long. There were two that were really straight and we kept those. So they were timbers that made up the school. And we are talking to a local woodworker who does furniture and stuff to have some benches, really solid benches that we're going to put in the front, looking at some different designs to do that. So.
Perfect.
Should be kind of, kind of a neat thing to have in the, in the entry of the building.
Awesome, that'd be great.
Commissioner Lausme.
Chief Ben, can you comment about the more recent complaint about homelessness and the cove or down by the, on the water at the river?
Yeah, so we are going to be bringing to you, there's a few things to say about that. So one of the things that happened is, I want to say this, as people, oftentimes, as homeless folks get displaced, they find a new place to go. We have increasingly been having more and more people down on the peninsula that is urban renewal property down along the river. And especially on that peninsula, it's been kind of a problem. So we posted a lot of that, no trespassing, to just remove, it just puts us in a better position in terms of, nobody can be there. Not just, not just, it's just nobody there. It's, it's very clearly posted, though a bunch of those posts were ripped out the day after we put them up, we've put them back up. So what has happened is some of those folks that have been in there, who were in there, have just moved out, outside of that peninsula. We have gotten a slew of complaints from people on the Gladstone side who are now looking at what used to be hidden. The best thing I can say is, so two things I'll say. One, it's a very complex issue because we're dealing with, everybody has rights, whether somebody has a home or not, they still have rights. And so we are trying to balance the public, the community, the business, the homeowners, but also the limits of what we can do legally in terms of, of the homeless issue. One of the things you're going to see a presentation on, on the fourth, is we've been working with Mr. Kabeizman and there is a gentleman from Gresham that Commissioner O'Donnell came and sat on, on a meeting we had, who's been pretty successful. I think one of the ways he puts it is, helping people who want to be helped, get help. And he's got some really good ideas. One of the things that we've figured out in this process with him is shoring up some of our policies and making, is that a code changer or is that?
So there's a policy that the city has to adopt, it wouldn't be part of the code. However, in discussions with your officers, are some code changes regarding camping that that may be coming forward, just to, to straighten up a few things.
Just to put us in the best position possible. And so you're going to have a presentation and both of those things are going to come before you on the fourth. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, yes, just a comment on the complaint that I think we saw.
So you have anything else, Horace? Commissioner McGriff, you got anything?
Yes, just wanted to reiterate, because you didn't read the proclamation, that November 24th through 30th is please support your local small businesses because they are our community members and the money we put, yes, thank you, or the money that we spend at our small businesses go back into the community and please support our small businesses. And I also wanted to give a salute, shout out to our superstar of the week, Library Director Maureen Cole.
Commissioner Smith?
Just one thing, I want to, I don't want to have a big discussion about it, but I do want to ask if the, the issue that was brought up by Citizen Tonight about staffing complaint, and I want to separate that from any of the issues in Canema, any of the issues and whatever. All I know in terms of that individual situation is it has come to this commission two, three, four times. And I just want to know what, what process has been gone through with the written complaints that we've got.
that we've got multiple times as a commission so that the next time it happens, I can say, this is what we did, this is what we found out. It's merited, it's not merited, whatever. We can't do that. And so what's going to happen is, that's going to continue to happen. I want to know, and so I want to know how many written complaints we've got and what we have done as a city to look into that and what the response was. If there was nothing, I want to know that. If we didn't do anything, I think we need to know that.
I want to be clear in what you're asking, Commissioner. Are you asking about complaints against a city staffer?
Yes.
I agree with you completely. I don't know if it takes three of us to say, establish a process that we add.
Well, I don't know if there is a process or what is. But I want to know, be able to answer that specific. And then the next question is, is there a process and what is it?
Well, I'm certain there's a process. I know there's a process because we looked at the process and we had to deal with the form of city manager.
I just don't know if we're following it.
So can you bring us back a briefing on that in the next meeting or two?
Yes.
The only challenge with that is you have to realize is that...
You're also talking about personnel.
The complaint about the staff is like one sliver of all of the complaints.
I get that. I'm not asking about the rest.
All right. Okay, we're moving on. Got it. The only thing I have is that I have been having regular meetings with the county and the rest of the cities on the West Clackamas County Service District, Tri-City Service District issues. And we came to a tentative, what would term I be use? Balance of power. Yeah.
Compromise.
Compromise, that's the word I'm looking for. So the idea is going to be that there will be a super committee in between this advisory committee. And the advisory committees now will be, the city representative to the West Advisory Committee will be appointed by the city commission or by the city rather than being selected by West as an at-large thing. So each city gets a representative on the advisory committee. And then that, those same city people will form this other committee that will meet with two of the county commissioners to weigh big decisions, large capital improvements at rate, trades and SDCs. Now, we don't have any veto authority, but there's a lot more communication going on and it was the best I was going to get in this whole long process that we've been doing with Oregon consensus. So I just wanted to update you that we're going to, the county is taking the first step towards writing an IGA that will have to be done between each city and the, and West and the county. And that will come back probably after the first of the year, we'll have a chance to look at it and discuss it.
Let me comment briefly.
Sure, go ahead.
I sat in on that and I want to tell you, there was a lot of pushing and shoving going on. And the mayors of our cities, whether it be Gladstone, Westland, our own mayor, they were admirable in their presentation and stood their ground and it was not yielded easily. And we did all right. We did better than we've ever done. So thanks for that.
A unified position helps, doesn't it?
Yeah. And with that, we're adjourned.